I'd like to call to meeting, or call to order the committee, the whole meeting for May 13th, 2010. And if you would take the role, please.
Mayor Ron is absent tonight. Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Here.
The clerk's here. Trustee Emery?
Here.
Trustee Forsley is absent tonight. Trustee Klebina?
Here.
Trustee Scott?
Here.
Trustee Seneca?
Here.
Manager Searle?
Here.
Attorney Semenek?
Here.
Economic Development Director and Assistant Manager Kimball. Finance Director Von Baga. Police Chief Mulhern.
Here.
Deputy Police Chief King.
Here.
Everyone will join me in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda tonight are the minutes of the committee, the whole meeting held April 29th, 2010, and the board meeting held May 3rd, 2010.
You have a second draft of the minutes at your places. For some reason, when we put the date in, it didn't copy for the following pages. So that got corrected. And also, the motion to adjourn from closed section and the motion to adjourn from the meeting did not have the right. Trustee's making the motions, and that has all been corrected. So I think they should be fine now.
Anything else? Okay, moving on. We have one request for open forum this evening. Barb Latzel from Frame Makers, 10 North Cass.
Thank you very much. I guess in honor of Lee turning another year older, they didn't want to have the lights on full strength in here this evening.
It's not just me. Her too. Both of us.
I'm just doing it so he doesn't feel bad.
Okay.
Doesn't show your wrinkles.
It's a kind of a romantic feeling in here this evening. Aside from the comedy and the happy birthdays to all, on behalf of the downtown, just wanted to come up here and remind the board and everybody watching and listening that we have the third annual Celebrate Downtown Westmont, starting tomorrow night and all day Saturday. And we have our maps in all the businesses that are participating. We have 23 businesses. Some are free spaces, so you don't have to visit them, although feel free. So visit all the businesses, get your maps stamped, and we have a great lineup of prizes. The top prize is a Westmont Shopping Spree. We have a flat screen TV. We have haircuts and massages from Karma Salon and gift baskets and gift certificates from all the businesses participating that you can win. So we hope everybody turns out. We're going to have a pirate ship. Pirates walking up and down downtown. Some of the businesses are, we're going to be dressed up and have decorations. And there's going to be some fire breathing and all kinds of neat stuff to come out and see. And just in case somebody doesn't know the hours yet, like me, Friday tomorrow will be from 5 till about 9:00 PM. 8 o'clock is when the fire breathing starts, with all that fun. And Saturday, May 15th, is 10 until 6:00. And once you finish your map, make sure you drop it off at the Frame Makers. You don't have to be present, but if you have time and would like to be there for the drawing, come by the Frame Makers 6 o'clock. We really look forward to all of our village board coming down and visiting our businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Under the mayor, I have special appreciation award tonight. I'll read this. Congratulatory Award of Appreciation to Trustee Sue Seneca. Received with a sincere thanks for this opportunity while I chair the Village Board Committee of the Whole Meeting on your birthdays, this the 13th day of May 2010. Happy Birthday, Sue.
Well, thank you.
From a guy who hates plaques.
Yeah. Well, thank you. Thank you.
Oh, my God. Comedy.
All right. Whose idea was this?
Yeah.
Okay. Here's the second one. Congratulatory Award of Self Appreciation to Trustee Lee Fleming. With sincere thanks to the village board for the opportunity to serve as the Village Board Committee of the Whole Meeting Chair on my birthday, this the 13th of May 2010.
Very good. Great, great.
Thank you.
Self appreciation. Very good.
And this wasn't planned. Go figure, you know? Okay. We have one other that I noticed here. It's recognition of athletic achievements, but those awards are going to be on Monday. Moving along to the village clerk.
I have nothing tonight, thank you, except happy birthday to you and Sue.
Thank you.
The village attorney?
Nothing tonight.
Village manager?
Thank you. I'd like an executive session following the regular meeting for personnel. Passed out a list of a supplemental purchase order, which in fact is not a supplemental purchase order. It does appear on the agenda, but we wanted to list it on this particular list to draw attention to the fact that this also appears on the finance ordinance besides being on the purchase order list. And also wanted to point out that there was an error on the agenda in terms of the purchase order number, and it is correct on the supplemental purchase order list that you have. So we'll make that correction on Monday night. And then the last thing I had was to ask Chief Mulhern to come to the podium. He wanted to talk a little bit about an upcoming activity he's going to be involved in.
Podium speaking.
Podium time. If I could read from a press release I just received today, police officers are to stake out 120 Dunkin' Donuts rooftops for Special Olympics starting May 21st. This is legitimate. Record numbers of Illinois police officers will stake out Dunkin's Donuts rooftops this year to support the annual Law Enforcement Torch Run to benefit Special Olympics. On May 21st, beginning at 5:00 AM, hundreds of police officers from throughout the state are scheduled to cover a record 120 Dunkin' Donuts rooftops to heighten awareness and raise money for the Law Enforcement Torch Run. In return for the police officers donating their time at their stores, Dunkin' Donuts will donate $10,000 to the Torch Run Fund. In addition, everyone who visits a cop on a rooftop store that day and makes a donation to the Torch Run will receive a, and I'll add this emphasis added, beloved donut. Persons who donate at least $10 will receive a Law Enforcement Torch Run travel mug and a coupon for free medium coffee. Other items such as Torch Run t-shirts and hats will be sold for various donation amounts. The event will begin at 5:00 AM and run through 2:00 PM at most locations. In some cases, mayors and other local officials will join police officers on the store roofs. Additional special activities may vary by store. I'm sure you're probably asking, why am I reading this? Because on May 21st, starting at 5:00 in the morning, I will be on the rooftop of the Dunkin' Donuts on 63rd Street. And I would appreciate everyone to come down and visit and hopefully make a donation to the Special Olympics, Torch Run for Special Olympics. All the money and everything goes towards the kids. The local police departments and the agencies don't get anything. It all goes right towards the kids and especially for the upcoming Torch Run, which will be held in DuPage County in June. So on next Friday, from 5:00 AM till 2:00 PM, if you're interested, come and see me up on the roof. Dawn King has a fundraising idea that whoever donates the most gets to take the ladder away so I can't come down. So I'm sure my officers will probably be the highest.
So Chief, will the ladder truck be there to take people up to see you?
You had to ask. If I could also show here, I'll show you a picture of what you can anticipate to see.
The Fart Department will be standing by to make rescues.
And as you can see here, this is a banner that we will have out there, and that is soon to be me up on the top of the roof.
Cute. And everybody will be able to see you.
Hopefully.
Rain or shine.
Rain or shine, I don't know. And I'd like to extend invitation to any village who wants to come and join me. You're more than welcome. I'm sure.
I think you want this to be a money-making event, don't you?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Ah, well.
Thank you for your time.
Just one last thing. I wanted to wish both you and Trustee Seneca happy birthday. And just to provide some context to the plaque presentation, to the extent that I can, there was a specific request from a member of the public to have the Mayor Pro Tem make some plaque presentations this evening.
Because you like plaques.
Wanted to point that out.
Yeah. Want to get even. I'll get even. See you later, dear. Anything else? That's it? Trustee items. We'll start with Trustee Klebina.
Several items. This is a very busy month, so I hope everybody got their Park District literature at their door or in their driveway. Tomorrow, we have the electronic drop-off from 7:00 AM to 1:00 PM at Ty Park. It's the, I believe, what is it, the north?
Southwest.
Southwest. The southwest corner of Plaza and Blackhawk. And we already heard about our Celebrate Downtown, so I'm hoping everybody gets there to see the pirate ship. Saturday, May 22nd, the Greg House Museum is hosting a sidewalk chalk art contest, and I think that information is also in the book. May 27th is the Fire Department Community Blood Drive, I believe. Okay, May 27th. And so check with the Fire Department on there. And then, of course, when we hit around our big Memorial Day weekend, we have, May 28th through the 30th, is the red, white, and barbecue at Ty Park. And the Race to the Flag is Sunday morning, May 30th, and then Memorial Day with our parade on May 31st. So we have a really, really big week. And I believe all, most of that information, if not all of it, is in that Park District booklet. So please go set the dates and times, and hopefully we'll all see you there. And that's all I have outside of happy birthday.
Thank you.
Trustee Seneca.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. Speedy recovery to Steve May and Karen MacKert, both recovering from surgery and on the men, doing very well. Glad to hear that. Also, on behalf of Trustee Forsley, there will be a finance meeting this Monday at 6:30 before the regular board meeting. And then the last thing I have is, this state, as you know, the budget's sort of in turmoil. And AARP, along with some of our local agencies, are sort of starting a phone campaign to all of our elected officials to encourage them to retain funding for the Senior Citizens Council, which, you know, delivers meals and wheels and chore days and things like that. There is an 800 number. All you do is you call this 800 number. It's a recording. You put in your ZIP code, and then you get an opportunity to leave a message. So we encourage everyone to call and encourage our state legislators to leave the funding alone. Many, many meals come right here to Westmont. We jumped through hoops on our board so that we could retain, you know, that donation. The number is 800-719-3020. So everybody, please, just call it and give the ZIP code and encourage our legislators to leave their funding alone. State's in crisis, so it's important money to them too, but I think there's a greater need for our seniors. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Emery?
Happy birthday to both of you.
Thank you.
And a welcome to our new undercover voluntary canine unit at the Fleming household. Her name is Cookie, and the reason that she has joined the voluntary canine unit as an undercover agent is because she's a feline.
I had a feline, Cookie, one time.
So welcome Cookie Fleming to the voluntary canine unit.
I'm just getting a hit from all sides tonight. That's okay. Anything else?
No, thank you.
Trustee Scott? I'm almost afraid to ask.
Just happy birthday to both of you. I won't ask which one's older.
Me. 61 going on 62, loving every day of it. No complaints.
That's all. Just happy birthday.
The only thing I'd like to say is thank you very much for the birthday wishes and happy birthday, Trustee Seneca.
Thank you.
We've done this for a long time.
Many years.
And what are the odds of two people on one board having the birthday on the same day? That's scary. And I still play the Lotto, and I still haven't won.
Yeah, we played it today. We didn't win.
The only other thing that I would like to kind of mention tonight, and unfortunately, I guess the young man was not able to be here, but I said that I would comment about it. Out of Hinsdale Central, they have a program over there, an entrepreneurship program. It's kind of like what these, what you see, the Celebrity Apprentice, they come up with ideas and thoughts. Well, unfortunately, they kind of ran into a little bit of a snag. The event is going to be held at Jay Fleming's on Saturday, the 15th. At this point, the only thing that I can say is, I can read their, the goal, they are a school-sponsored entrepreneurship class promoting a product that we created with the help of the head chefs of Jay Fleming's, absolutely delicious. Through our advertising, we must attract as much business as possible, and would appreciate your help. This is something that, I mean, like you see, raising funds for whatever. It's between 11:00 and 4:00. The original request was that they wanted to be able to hand out flyers at the train station tomorrow. Well, it's a little late. I mean, I could ask if it's something that we could permit in a back situation, which we've done before, but, I mean, I also understand if we can't. I mean, it's, I was just looking at it as being, you know, Hinsdale High School, and I think one of the biggest, one of the biggest lessons they've learned in this is, you need to contact your local government to find out what their rules and particular things are. So I think that was a very learning part of this.
We have voted on things on Monday night to retroactively okay something that occurred the prior weekend. So I certainly have no objection to allowing them to go muster up some business tomorrow.
What does everybody else think?
I think it's a safe assumption that it'll be a tasteful handout, that it won't be offensive.
Actually, I have copies of it right here. I was given.
I have no problem approving it on Monday. And I would encourage them to come to Celebrate Downtown Westmont.
Oh, yeah.
Walk around and talk to people.
That's another reason they're going to kind of do this. The other thing is that they have been told very specifically that they will be expected to police any garbage or any flyers that have been dropped in any way, shape, or form. They'll be responsible during the day tomorrow, as well as Saturday. So this is also part of their, part of their program.
And they know they can't be on the train platform, right?
Right. They know they cannot be on the platform.
Good. I think it's fine.
It's a nice flyer. No problem. Very nice flyer.
Okay. Well, moving on. First item we have under unfinished business, parking permits. This is the downtown employee commuter and commuter parking. Board to continue review of the downtown employee parking permit program, as well as to consider a change in the oversell percentage of commuter parking spaces.
Just to provide background, this was on the agenda for April 29th, and the board voted to postpone it at the May 3 meeting to give us an opportunity to send out letters to all the permit holders for the employee parking permit program. The clerk's office did do that. And there are two issues, I guess, before the board tonight. One is to look at changing the number of spaces that are allotted to the employee parking program. And then the other issue that was raised was possibly increasing the percentage of oversell for the commuter permits. And I wanted to draw attention in the pack, there's a table that was prepared by the deputy village clerk in which it gives you the number of permits by parking area, as well as the permits sold, sorry, the number of spaces, the number of permits sold, the number that's oversold, and then the percent. And then he provides the recommendation of increasing Burlington Avenue B lot by 15%, which would equate to 27 more spaces. So that, that was their, the deputy clerk's recommendation for the board's consideration.
Questions? Comments?
I don't know if there's anybody here from the public.
Anyone from the public to talk about this? State your name and.
Hi, Tim Giannakopoulos, 15 North Cass Avenue, Karma Salon Spa. I was just wondering, does that mean taking away from the business allotted parking spaces or adding on to? That's changing, but.
Yeah, the idea was to reduce the number, I think it was by seven spaces.
Yeah, over here, it's not being used that much. We're losing a lot of money on.
On average, it's like two vehicles.
Yeah. I'm Quincy, you're talking about.
Burlington.
Burlington.
Right over here, that we took the commuter parking.
Do you have a number of how many, how many permits were sold or?
There are only two tops cars being parked there.
There's 21 permits that were sold, and there were, I believe, 37 spaces designated. And on Burlington Max, there's only two to five cars, and we have designated 17 or 15 spaces. And the commuters are saying, how come these are all open and nobody's using them? So we want to back them down a bit. So that's what that is.
So if people aren't buying them, there's still enough spaces for the people that did buy?
Absolutely.
Any other comments? Then Monday, does that mean what we're doing is we're actually going to vote on reducing it by seven spaces?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's the first part of the vote, and then the second part of the vote would be the changing the oversell percentage.
Okay.
Yep.
If everyone's on board with that.
Yep.
New business. Marco Tanbar Salon. Board to consider approval of a request to operate a women's retail salon in the B1 Limited Business District located at 218 North Cass Avenue. Can you step forward?
Hello, everybody, and happy birthday again. I'm Marco Tanborher Salon, actually. I'm from 213 Burlington in Clarendon Hills. And just looked at the location at 218 North Cass, and I would just like to move the salon from that area to Westmont, including new retail. Trying to add a little bit more retail into my salon. I need a little bit bigger space.
Mr. Tanbor, the ordinance that we have presented to us asks for a women's retail salon, and it says that it's for a retail, women's retail shop on the ground floor space. And I couldn't tell by our materials that the board got, do you intend to move your hair salon from Clarendon Hills to Westmont?
Yes, and adding more retail in the Westmont area.
Mr. Kimball? Is a hair salon require a special use permit?
Yes, it would.
Okay. Why is there no new business requesting a special use permit?
Well, given the fact that there was a retail component associated with this, the village planner was of the opinion that the board could rule on it on the basis of a retail establishment.
Are they coming at the same time? You're going to move everything at one time, or you're going to open up a retail and bring the salon there?
I can open the retail and bring the salon within like a month or so.
Okay.
So the retail first.
Both of them together. Retail first could be.
Okay. Why are we seeing this before planning and zoning?
If the request trustee is to operate a women's retail in the B1 Limited Business, we thought that was appropriate and needs the approval of the village board as a development issue. If they subsequently move the salon, I believe that would require a special use permit and be scheduled before the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Well, since the plan is to relocate the salon, and I must tell you, I'm disappointed in the materials that were given to us in our package. I think they were woefully inadequate. It just says, you know, I want to sell more hair retail accessories, women's clothes, wedding dresses. I mean, what is this going to be? I think in all fairness to everybody, when something requires a special use permit, before you come to us and open part of something and then go to P&amp;Z, and it comes back to us, and if we don't approve it, and even though the materials say that Mr. Tanbor understands if it's not approved, he'd have to move out, you make us the bad guy. Okay? I think the proper steps here should be taken. It requires a special use permit. You start at P&amp;Z. If they need more information, they do their job and they do it well, and it comes to us complete package. I don't like this. I would like to see it go the proper way it's supposed to.
If it's coming in, though, as full retail, it's a retail use first, and then the salon would be an add-on to the retail. So I can see where the retail doesn't require any special use. Retail is a permitted use.
But he could also be denied on the.
It's the risk he takes.
And I believe the village planner.
You know, if he's willing to take that risk, I have no problem with it.
The village planner did have that specific discussion with the petitioner indicating that, and I think is in the second paragraph of her write-up, indicates that he is in the process of seeking that required special use permit for a salon business. Now, if something happens and the board does not approve the salon business, he can either continue to operate the retail business or choose to discontinue it. That is his choice.
How do we, what's the square footage of the property?
Does the, 1400? 1400.
Okay. How do you do a hair salon, women's clothes, and a wedding dress store in 1400 square feet?
I was just going to use, I'm looking at unique different things. I'm not looking at a full line of a clothing. I'm just going to have like a wedding dress, arrays and a couple of accessories, just to dress it up a little bit. That's what I was looking for.
So is it primarily going to be a salon, though? 1400 square feet?
It's going to be a salon into the clothing, because you do like a lot of brides and makeup, shampoos, so part of it is going to be with the salon. So my main things is going to be the salon, but then retail is going to be around.
So will you sell wedding gowns and?
Not a full wedding gown, like certain of weddings, meaning like certain dresses, but not a huge one, like simple, like the simple things.
So what, you'll have samples there and?
Part of it's going to be like that, yeah. But more like the accessory for the brides. That's what I'm looking more to.
Okay. So if the business is still primarily the salon, I think it should go to P&amp;Z.
This really doesn't sound like a lot of different than another hair place that sells accessories or soaps or something like that anyhow. It's, no matter what you're needing, they're still going to need the permission or the variance in it.
Yep.
I think the part of this is that I would hate to see us start bringing in a portion of one thing and putting the cart before the horse, so to speak, on a particular issue. I personally believe that if we were to bring and allow this to transpire, that we may open up other avenues of other possible people that may want to come in and lease, bring something in, and then go through the process of getting a special permit. I mean, I'm not opposed to what it is, but I think in the past, we've had a lot of other people come into this town, and they've had to go through an arduous process to get to their point. And I think we've pretty well stood on it as long as I can remember. A special request is a special request for a variance.
I think we're helping him, because if he signs a lease and he doesn't get it, he's stuck.
Right.
This way here, it's no different than any other salon coming in that needs the approval, and most of the other salons sell stuff also. This is what this is, ancillary sales.
I was just going to say.
Yeah, it's going to be the same, I mean, it's going to be a hair salon, but.
In retrospect, most salons do sell something.
Right.
Not always clothing, but stuff.
Right. But it's not a retail business.
Right.
And that's not, they're not really classified as retail at that point.
I have absolutely no problem with a salon coming in. I mean, I fought long and hard for Karma, and that was a hard one to get passed on this board, believe it or not. People, you know, wanted retail and not a salon. But, so I have no problem with a salon, but in retrospect, I guess most salons do sell things.
Yeah, they do. I mean, they have that retail component, but the other thing is that, I mean, we don't know if there's going to be, you know, acrylic nails being done in there. There has to be proper venting, you know, the.
It's not going to be no nails, just hair. No nails. No nails, no massage, no nothing.
All right. Well, anyway, it requires a special use permit, which requires P&amp;Z to do their work.
Well, I was thinking of the fact that if he opens it up first as retail and then he gets approved for his salon, it means, I mean, that's going to be massive undertaking, putting all the plumbing and stuff, because that has, that all has to be from scratch. There's no plumbing in there for that. I don't know how the bathroom situations are, but he's going to need a washroom situation in there for, you know, re. you know, retail wouldn't need one just for their employees, but once he has a salon, he's going to have to have public washrooms. I don't know if that's going to require anything special from a state inspection point of view to open up a salon. But I just think, once he opens up retail, that would, it would be difficult to open up the salon. He's got to open up and do everything in one jump, and it would just be better off for him to make sure he's approved first. Make sure the salon is approved between the P and Z and then, you know, and then the board here before you go through any massive financial.
So I gotta reply it one more time?
And the space is 1400 square feet?
Yes.
So it doesn't require sprinkling, right?
Have you filled out the applications? I know you've talked with the village planner about the applications for the special use permit, so that is in process, yes.
How many years have you been in business in Clarendon Hills?
Three.
I just hate for you to put any money into doing something to this building and then find out, you know, that the board doesn't want another hair salon, you know, that's got to be special use. So it would save you money to go through the process first. You're going to have to go through it, whether it's now or later. I hate for you to open up retail, because I think your retail is only going to go because the salon is going to be there. And so I hate for you to put the money into retail and then find out, you know, the board decides no more salons downtown, and you're stuck.
So this case, what do I have to do now?
He'll schedule.
File the special use agreement. We'll schedule you for a hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, then, will he be on the...
June 9th.
Okay, he'll be on June 9th. Do we want to, at this point, bring this in on Monday? Or do we want to take this off of the agenda?
If there's, I still think if there's, if it's going to be primarily a salon and it needs a special use permit, it should come off our agenda until it goes through P and Z at June 9.
Do it all in one shot.
Don't want to deny it.
I'm kind of getting, I'm kind of getting the sense here that this is the way this is going, that it's, it's going back to planning and zoning.
And there, I mean, can we get it on planning and zoning for their next meeting, do you think?
I believe it is.
It's, well, it's on for the 9th.
Yeah.
Yeah, and see, in order to get on the agenda for the
It says tentatively.
Which is scheduled for the second Wednesday of every month, you have to have your materials in approximately 30 days before that, so that statutorily required notifications can be published in the newspaper and notices can be placed as to the agenda.
Maybe we have done that, too.
Well, he hasn't got it. It says tentatively on July 9th, so I didn't know if he has time to get all his paperwork in.
We did the mailing?
A little less than a month.
He is in process of pursuing his special use permit, has been scheduled for a P and Z hearing.
It is on the agenda for June 9th.
June 9th, okay, that's fine.
So can we take this off of the agenda for Monday?
That's good, if that works, we'll move it then.
We'll take her off.
June 9th?
Anything else on this? Anybody from the audience?
Hello, Tim Giannakopoulos, owner, operator, Karma Salon Spa, 15 North Cass Avenue. Kind of all touched base before I can even get up here, but I'm surprised that this issue even got this far. I'm here tonight to inquire why certain businesses must follow the Village of Westmont policies while others don't. I had to go through a pretty grueling process as trustee Fleming slash mayor this evening. It was my understanding that when opening a business in downtown Westmont, an individual must first meet with the economic development head, secondly, meet with planning and zoning, possibly to obtain a special use permit, and thirdly, appear before the village board for final authorization. Obviously, it's come to my attention, a business would like to open and for operation at 218 and 220 North Cass Avenue without meeting all these requirements. And again, I'm surprised that economic development is able to decide which individuals and which businesses are able to bypass or forego previously established policies. When I began this process of opening my business four years ago, I met with Fred Kimball, head of economic development, and was told a salon was not in the scope of what the Village of Westmont was looking for. I was also informed that I would only be able to open a salon if another existing salon either went out of business, relocated, closed. And if this did occur, that I'd have 90 days to renovate the building and open for business. I spent the next eight months fighting tooth and nail to open a salon in the Village of Westmont, B1 District. I went through eight board meetings in eight months. At that time, it was, I think, only once a month, and after I did get granted in, I did ask the village to try to do at least twice a month or something, because it is hard to get, you know, it postpones everything, obviously. This meant eight months of mortgage payments, eight months of attorney fees, eight months of delaying the progression of my build-out, not to mention lost revenue. Thousands of dollars I spent fighting to open my business, I could have installed a sprinkler system, an elevator, or even expanded my building. When I was finally approved by the village board to open my business, I was told that no other salons would be opening unless, of course, one went out of business and you renovated that. Being grandfathered in is one reason I did choose to remain here in town. Unfortunately, there are many open storefronts right now in downtown Westmont, and Fred Kimball and the Economic Development Committee are under pressure, I think, to fill these empty places, storefronts. I wonder how many other entrepreneurs have been discouraged and frustrated by the inconsistent adherence to village policy. Village must be consistent and provide equal treatment to every business and every individual. The village was not only, I think, somewhat discriminatory, but is also contradicting what I was told during my process. I'm here tonight not only to receive an explanation, but also find out who will be reimbursing me for eight months of unnecessary money spent and eight months of lost revenue. Basically, where do I pick up my check?
Well, first of all, we're not bypassing any policies.
No.
What was happening here was separating two different issues and following two different tracks. I think in part, and in defense of the Economic Development Department, there's been a lot of criticism recently and feedback that we've gotten through to the Downtown Westmont Business Alliance, that we're trying to be a little more friendly and receptive to different business proposals, and I think this was an attempt to try to accommodate that. And there was certainly no decision made or no effort to try to bypass any particular policy. They're still going to have to go through the process, and it was just following two different tracks. But clearly, we will not do that again in the future, because, you know, the board has made it clear, we want to keep these two things together.
Is there such a grandfathering requirement that we have a limited number of salons, and if somebody vacates one, then a new one can come in?
Well, trustee, I believe what Mr. Giannakopoulos is referring to is legal nonconforming use business in the downtown. We established at the direction of the village board a requirement that salons have a special use permit. There was a longstanding discussion as a policy matter in the Village of Westmont as to whether or not we wanted to target retail, or whether we wanted to allow more service businesses to exist in the downtown. What Mr. Giannakopoulos is referring to is a number of discussions we had where he said, what do I have to do if I want to open a salon? At that time, we did not allow service businesses either by special use permit or as permitted uses in the downtown central business district. I informed him that if he wanted to purchase an existing legal nonconforming use business and operate that without 90 days of interrupted service, that he could do that and thereby become a salon in our downtown. I believe he has misunderstood the nature of our discussion.
I vividly remember, at that point, we didn't, it was not a special use. And I remember, there were people on the board at the time that were dead set against a salon coming downtown.
I know we didn't misunderstand.
And I was, I was pretty vocal at the time that the salon should be allowed to come in. And, you know, I would give the same vocal opinion to any salon that wanted to come in to our downtown.
And I will reaffirm what I just said. If you do not allow beauty salons by special use permit or as a permitted use,
I remember.
Then the only way another salon may come in is to purchase an existing business or to occupy a building where a salon formerly operated without 90 days of uninterrupted, of interrupted service. I believe the village attorney will stand by that explanation.
Yeah, I remember that.
Or text amendment to allow it as a special or permitted use. And apparently, that happened, and the zoning ordinance was changed to allow this use. And I know Karma obviously got their...
Yes, even changed their name.
Thank you.
I think you worked hard to come into this town, so.
I did, I did. And, you know, my point is just to see that, you know, the rules were, our policies or whatever was going to be a little bent. I mean, it was really unclear what this was going to be. And for what they were going for tonight, and what it's, the main thing is, were two totally different things. So, I mean, for someone like me that came in and had to spend a lot of money to fight and get into this town, and then for something like a red carpet to be rolled out, come on in, it's pretty upsetting. So, thank you.
Do you, what was at least the year, if not the date, that you came before us? Do you remember at least the year? I want to look over the videotape.
It'll be four years in October, so it was probably a little longer than that, because it took a long time to, again, the meetings were only once a month. So I know it was at least six to eight meetings that I went through before everything got settled.
We've always had two, you mean for the village board or for the planning? The board has always had four meetings a month, two voting. So are you talking about the planning only had one meeting a month?
I just remember every, I think at that time, wasn't it Tuesdays? It was once a month.
No, we always had Monday for voting, so, first and third Monday. So, now, I want to go back and see if I can find the video and listen to the conversation again on it, so. Because I know I've, I've always had no problems. I've gone to the hairdressers downtown. I've used the dentist downtown. I mean, I've always believed in them. We can't always get retail. These buildings are not always made for retail, so.
I just know, the town at the time was very adamant about a salon not coming. And I think everything that I did say when I was trying to open a business about, you know, networking with certain, you know, every business I could, I think I definitely stood by that and have proven that, you know, not only, you know, is my business thriving, but to help promote other businesses in town, I think was a big thing, so, thanks again.
Your honor, if I may, I would just like to make a couple of statements for the record here. At the time that Mr. Giannakopoulos attempted to open a new salon at the time, the village was implementing the policy that was determined by the Westmont Village Board. Subsequently, the village board decided to change that policy, at which point staff enthusiastically implemented that new policy direction. And at that time, Mr. Giannakopoulos was allowed to seek a special use permit to operate his beauty salon. Secondly, I would like to read from the write-up that was presented to the village board by village planner Shannon Malik, the second paragraph of which refers to the Tanbor business here today. It says, "Tanbor is in the process of seeking a special use permit to operate a ground floor salon in the B1 Limited Business District, and has been tentatively scheduled for the June 9th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Following that, he will be scheduled for a second appearance before the village board in regard to the special use permit and amendment to this development permit request to authorize the salon. Staff recognizes that the schedule of meetings in this fashion is outside of the norm, but has attempted to accommodate the applicant's request to begin operating the retail component ahead of the salon component. Tanbor understands that he proceeds at his own risk, and should the subsequent special use permit request be denied, he will not be able to operate a hair salon in this location." So I believe that was clearly spelled out in the board packet. A third thing that I would like to point out, Mr. Giannakopoulos insinuated that we have changed the number of meetings for the Planning and Zoning Commission. As long as I have been here, for the six years that I have been here, the Planning and Zoning Commission has met once a month on the second Wednesday of each month. That was the schedule before, that is the schedule now, and unless the board gives different direction, that will be the schedule in the future.
I'm not so upset that they came before the board tonight, because we found out it's not going to be retail slash hairdresser. I think it's going to be hairdresser, is what it is. And if we'd have waited longer, at least we were able to put everybody in the right path. But by them coming up before us tonight, which didn't get anything done for them, except for the path that they have to take. But we do know now that this isn't a retail shop with a hairdresser, more as the smaller part of it, which is kind of how it looks here. It says retail slash hairdresser. We want to open up retail first. And that's not what happened, so.
I can tell you...
I think the system worked.
And I can tell you that the planner did have that specific discussion with the petitioner. They were adamant, they wanted to proceed with the retail portion, and that is why they were here before you tonight, was at the petitioner's request.
And again, the system worked, because we found out, and they've got to go through the right channels.
Yeah, I think it would be a different story if it was going to be retail for six or eight months or whatever, and then they were going to put a salon in at some time in the future. Not unlike the salon that was approved for 210 North Cass at the time. That never happened.
And we're only looking, and they were only looking at a month difference.
Yeah, so it's kind of close together, so. No harm done, but I'm glad that we got it right.
And I can say, going back, looking at that meeting, the, from a board that was opposed to something, the final vote ended up being six zip in favor of, so presented the case well. And I said, you know, and it went well, and I just look at that, we have a procedure that we follow. And unless something tremendously special falls, I mean, I think we have to follow that guideline that we've set up. Granted, and everyone here knows that I hate the way that government grinds its wheels sometimes, but sometimes you have to do those things in order to make sure what you're dealing with.
And I don't think P and Z voted complete on it either. I think they were split on the decision.
It was tough. Tim went through a lot.
Yeah. He was put through the meat grinder. I'll testify to that.
It was tough.
Yes.
If I could please, I do not own a salon, own a freemakers. But just speaking as a downtown business, yes, we do desperately need businesses. But on the other hand, it's truly insulting to the rest of us businesses that have played by the rules and have submitted all our work as the board requested and have brought forth complete business plans as to how we plan to run our business, what we plan to have in our business. And we don't appreciate it being overlooked, seemingly overlooked in this case. And I most definitely applaud trustee Emery for bringing this forth and getting to the heart of the matter. Thank you very much.
Anything else?
I will just say one more thing, and that is that, you know, my vision of our downtown is still to have primarily specialty shops and restaurants. The last thing I want to see is all of Cass Avenue architects and attorneys and insurance offices and investment firms, but I think that there is a place for all of those things within a downtown. And to me, a hair salon has always been more of a retail-type specialty thing than some of the other service businesses, but that's just my two cents.
We done now?
Done.
Okay. Moving on. Oakbrook Toyota and, is that Serva?
Serva.
Serva, okay. Board to consider approval of a special use permit request to allow off-site storage of vehicle inventory in the OR Office Research District located at 700 Oakmont Lane.
Good evening, everyone. George Walcott from Oakbrook Toyota. I know many, many, many of you. Alan, I haven't met you yet, so. We are in agreement with the Serva Corporation under the hard work of Mr. Kimball, and then going through the planning and zoning issue like you need to do, and getting their approval. We are using their lot over there, and we're here just for approval on the special use permit from the village. We currently use, are renting 200 spots from them. There's no retail business that goes on there. If we indeed need a car or a customer wants to see a car, we take one over there and bring it back and show them at our store. There's absolutely no, no bringing customers over there, just like we don't bring them on the top deck, top deck of our, in our parking lot, because we have an ordinance on that as well. So, just here to answer any questions you may have. Again, we use 200 spots, and that's it in a nutshell.
George, just two questions. You see the need for the next 12 to 24 months for this?
Bob, I think we put that, we put that in there just so we wouldn't have to go through the process one more time. I honestly think 12 months may do it, but hey, you know what? Wouldn't it be great if we did need it for 24, because that's just more tax revenue that we're producing for the village, so.
What happens after that, though? What would change it that you wouldn't need it at that point? Is this just overstock of cars you've got?
Yes, that's all it is, Bob.
You'll work it down so you don't have that much anymore, okay. And then what about security?
Currently, we go over there and check it ourselves, but the Westmont Police Department is nice enough to do a special patrol through there at night to make sure no... is nice enough to do a special patrol through there at, at night to make sure nothing's going on.
But nothing's locked up, or?
Well, the cars are all locked.
No, I know the cars are, but it's not a fenced area.
No, no.
All right.
Pretty much just like our lot right now.
Okay.
The way the ordinance is drafted, it would require, well, it's a 12-month period for the special use, and requires the applicant to come back to the board for an extension of the special use without having to go back to planning and zoning. So, is that acceptable to everyone?
That's fine.
That's good.
Or you can use the rough of the Dunkin' Donuts.
I have a question now.
Yeah.
The information we have in here, I guess, is your agreement with Serva.
Yeah.
And it's only for six months, and it's already been activated for almost three months, right? Because you're only looking to, your agreement with them is up in September?
Yes.
And then I do see that, you know, they do allow, I guess, that, you know, upon agreement, there could be a continuance on, on that part. I, I was trying to understand what part one was. Should the terms be renewed, the petitioner must reappear the board to request a 12-month extension. Now, when does that part go in? Because are we doing this till September 1st, or is this a year from now? I, I don't understand the, our end of the date.
It's a 12-month special use permit, starting from Monday.
Okay.
With the right to renew it, and again, it would be up to the board then to say whether it's for three months, six months, 12 months, if it's renewed, or if it's not allowed to be renewed.
Okay.
And, and if it terminates sooner, then so be it. You know, if his lease runs out or whatever, or they don't have the need, they can obviously end the use on their own sooner.
So, we're saying that right now, as of Monday, if it's approved, he has, he doesn't have to come before us for 12 months?
Correct.
Okay, so.
However, it will lapse, if he fails to come in front of us, it will lapse, and he's gonna have to go back to planning and zoning and start the process over.
Correct.
But at the end, if he gets here before, just before the end of the 12 months, he just has to come to us for an extension?
That is the suggestion, to make it easier on Toyota, presuming there's no change of circumstances. If there's a change of circumstances with the layout, lighting, whatever, you can send it back to planning and zoning.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Folks, thank you very much. Lee, happy birthday, and Sue, happy birthday to you too.
Thank you.
Next. Masonry Building Code Amendment. Board to consider approval of staff recommended amendments to the Westmont Building Code. Oh, sorry. Back up. That's what happens when you get another year older. Engineering Services Agreement. Board to consider approval of an Engineering Services Agreement with Willis Burke Kelsey Associates for Engineering Services on the St. Joseph Creek Stream Bank Restoration Project.
This is related to a very longstanding project in the village whereby the village board had authorized a, a project working jointly with the homeowners along St. Joseph Creek to improve the erosion problem there. The litigation finally resolved itself, longstanding litigation last year. We finally worked through all the details of that, and what we're asking for at this point is to enter into this Engineering Services Agreement to get the design work done. We had made a commitment several years ago that once we received monies from the settlement of the lawsuit, that we would begin the project by having that design work done, and then we will be coming back to the board. We're, we're ultimately planning on taking a part of the lot 117 that was deeded over to the village, and subdividing that, and selling off a part of that property, and using that funding as well to help fund this project. The balance of any expense needed to finish this project will, or can be paid for out of a special service area that we've set up in agreement with the homeowners along there. So, this is kinda the first step in getting that project going, or really going, and you'll see different things coming to the board over the next few months and probably a couple of years as we move forward with this.
Yes, it was a long process, but I think Mr. Diamond was the one that finally came in.
Yes, which is why I will abstain from any voting on St. Joseph project. It predates me even at my place of employment.
Yeah.
So long that the consulting engineer that we're hiring actually has changed its name. Still the same principal that did all the original work, but.
This is his grandson. This almost taps the fence. In a long time.
It's close. It's real close. Okay. Any comments from the audience? Okay. Now, we go on to the Masonry Building Code Amendment. Board to consider approval of staff recommended amendments to the Westmont Building Code concerning the requirements for masonry construction in the village.
Thank you, your honor. Staff is pleased to present for the board's consideration tonight a clarification in the Westmont Code of Ordinances, where previously, for a number of years, we have operated under what we call our full masonry requirement, which is a local amendment to the 2003 International Building Code. Staff has completed a thorough analysis and attempt to clarify the meaning of that and make it more clear to all potential developers. We have had difficulty explaining that on a couple of occasions to developers that wanted to say, "Well, I wanna do brick veneer over a frame," and we had to say, "No, you're required to do full masonry," which is either the, what many people call the flexicore construction for multifamily dwellings, or block and brick construction, which we would construe to be full masonry. We offer these changes in an effort to clarify the intent of the local ordinance.
Okay, so we're still not requiring the duplexes to have full masonry, correct?
That is correct, and that is by board direction.
Okay. Any comments?
Clear.
I think as a whole, we've, we've kinda, we've kinda gone around and around with this, and depending on the particular situation, they've come in with special requests or asked to allow commercial properties, and, as a matter of fact, I think we just approved a project of townhomes that we kinda faced this dilemma of the interpretation of it.
And there have been other cases as well that the board is aware of. For example, with some commercial structures, rather than block and brick, they're going with the precast concrete. Several of our auto dealers have made additions or new, new structures with the precast concrete, and those must come before the village board to ask for an exception to this masonry requirement, because even though precast concrete is, is very strong and very durable, very long-lasting, and can now be made to be aesthetically very pleasing, it does not technically meet the definition of full masonry construction.
Any other comments?
Now, there'll still be somebody who'll try to find another way of interpreting this.
There always is.
Yep.
Contractors are in it to make money, just remember that. That's why they have, why.
But we, we certainly agree with the current village policy that for long-term durability to maintain and enhance property values, the, the full masonry construction on masonry and, on multifamily and commercial structures improves the quality of life in our community.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on. Don Morris Architects, PC. Board to consider authorizing staff to enter into a agreement with Don Morris Architects, PC, for building plan reviews and building and electrical inspections.
Yes, your honor, members of the village board, it's, it's certainly no secret that the village of Westmont has not been immune from the financial pressures of the downturn in the national and world economy. Indeed, we have seen our, our public revenues decline. Many difficult policy decisions were forced to be made by the Westmont Village Board during the approval of our most recent budget document. One of the things that we would point out for, for the public's information is that, you know, Westmont being a, a service business is primarily consisting of a lot of expenses that relate to individual people and salaries and benefit packages. Indeed, I believe that overall, the Westmont Village Organization is approximately 80% personnel cost and 20% non-personnel cost. Unfortunately, in the Economic Development Department, where we rely on perhaps older equipment, driving vehicles that are previous, previously driven as police vehicles, for example, we spend very little on equipment, and we're about 91% personnel services. Several years ago, the total permit fee revenues generated by the development pace that we experienced in the, kinda the go-go times of 2002 to 2007 or so, a couple, three years ago, the total number of permit fees revenue generated was in the vicinity of $420,000. It's easier to maintain your staff overhead when you have a high level of permit fee income and a high development pace. This past year, by way of comparison, the total amount of permit fees generated was about $130,000. That prompted the Westmont Village Board to look at our budget with a very, and make some very difficult decisions about, can we continue to maintain staffing levels that we have in the face of that falling permit fee revenue that comes in from development projects? And one of the decisions that was made, that was an assumption in that approval of that budget, was that we consider privatizing or contracting out the services of plan reviews and building inspections. It's a decision that was not made lightly. Much thought went into the decision. Staff is calling it, I guess, an unfortunate situation. We know that we will lose some flexibility by doing that, by not having staff on hand to respond immediately to the concerns that residents or the village board may have. However, we believe that there may be the opportunity for savings that would result from the privatization of these services. Accordingly, we have reviewed proposals from three different entities, and staff presents for your consideration tonight the recommendation that Don Morris Architects, PC, be awarded a contract with the village of Westmont to perform these services.
Fred, they have, I mean, in your opinion, do they have a suitable number of inspectors available that if things did pick up, or, you know, if someone is ill, that they can still, you know, be there when we need them to be there? I mean, are we comfortable with their manpower ability?
Yes, that's one of the things that we inquired about. They do have a number of inspectors where they are redundant, shall we say? They have several backups, so that even if they have people who are ill or on vacation, they can provide coverage and prompt response times for those plan review services and building inspections. They perform similar services in approximately 24 other Chicago metro communities and come very highly regarded with high recommendations from those communities.
Do they typically dedicate an inspector or team of inspectors to a single project? Or?
Yes, they will. Yes, they will.
They will?
We would have an assigned representative that would handle the plan reviews and the building inspections.
Okay.
They would also have other staff.
They also make a concerted effort to rotate and make sure other people in the firm are familiar with the various clients, so that they have adequate and seamless coverage if, for some reason, your assigned person is not able to provide that.
And other communities have been successful with using this method?
Yes, they, they come very highly regarded, good references, shall we say, in the other communities with whom we have checked.
I passed out a proposed agreement with them. We're still waiting to hear back a response. I'll let you know on Monday if there's any proposed changes.
Okay. These fees here that they're charging, that is a direct fee that the people will have to pay themselves, it's not coming?
That's a very good question, trustee, and one of the things, we've passed out some additional information earlier tonight. We will be coming back to the village board based upon your ultimate decision with regard to this matter, and perhaps making some specific recommendations to how permit fees will be handled in the future in light of the, the costs that we believe we're going to experience for development projects. There are a couple of different scenarios that we could go with. We could reevaluate our permit fee structure and say, based on the estimated number of plan reviews, the number of inspections for each particular project by size and type, we might wanna build that in to our permit fee structure. What some other communities have done that we also want to take a look at is maybe rolling back our permit fees to a very nominal amount, and then saying, "All plan review fees and building inspections would be passed on directly to the developers at an actual cost basis." So, in other words, we would pay the plan review and building inspection contractor, turn around and immediately bill the developer for that same amount of money. We would then, our permit fee structure would be reduced to where we would just have a few hours' worth of administrative clerical staff time loaded into that fee structure, if you will, to recoup our costs and to make sure that, as you pointed out earlier, trustee Clavell, that these are fees that reflect our cost of administering the program, that don't have, shall we say, a markup on them, which would cause them to be categorized more as taxes rather than fees to offset the cost of a program.
But right now, on a, on a permit, if somebody came in today and, and got a permit, that permit they're purchasing or getting today, is, that's gonna cover, at this point, all inspections, whether it was done in-house or by this company?
Well, we're, we're, I guess we're gonna be making an important transition here based on the village board's budget decision.
We don't have anything stuck in the middle of this transition, do we?
We may, but it would only be for a short period of time. We would be back to you very soon with a recommendation for fee structure and how that should be modified. Even if we did not make any changes, we're comfortable that we would recoup the vast majority of the expenses that are involved in plan reviews and building inspections with our current fee structure.
Okay, 'cause by, I, you know, the next set of meetings isn't till June, and with all that time in there, I didn't know if there were any permits out there, 'cause I didn't know if, if these are higher fees than what we've normally charged, then we're definitely gonna be hurting if we don't do something.
In some cases, they are, and in some cases, they're lower.
Okay.
Well, then, I think, I think what, you know, ED needs to do is, building needs to put together a sheet and just make it very simple, break out what we're charging, all our particular permit fees, exactly what they're charging, put them side by side, and if you have to put a fee on there, a nominal fee for, you know, handling paper, basically, is what you're doing, then that's what you do. But I think this is gonna be one of the things you're gonna see coming out of this economic turn that we've got, is villages have now gotten to the point, and it's, it's proven that you now have a company that's coming up out of nowhere to offer this service to consolidate because of the cost incurred in a lot of villages. And I mean, it's, and like you said, the decisions that we've had to make are very difficult, but also the other side is that particular department is primarily personnel trip. Right now, the economic situation we're in just does not, it doesn't balance.
Just for clarification, this particular company, though, has been around for a while, has been doing this for a while, and to trustee Seneca's earlier question, they have demonstrated the ability to scale up as they've gained clients, and they've grown quite a bit over a number of years. And the communities that we've talked to that have been longstanding clients with them, regardless of the growth, they've still been satisfied with the quality of service that they've gotten from them.
Right. Are we locked into a contractual agreement with them that we can?
We have.
If we're not happy with their service?
Yes, you can terminate the agreement upon notice to them. It, it stated it's a one-year term with automatic annual renewals, but each party has the right to terminate with 180 days advance notice, and the village can terminate sooner if there's a default by the contractor, sooner.
Good. That's good.
A lot of the communities around us will all be trying to vie for getting builders to come in, and the fee structures will no doubt be, what'll be attracting the part of it, maybe we can try to find out what some of the other communities are doing, so we know we're in the ballpark at least.
And, yes, trustee, we're, we're very mindful of that fact. We wanna strike a balance here. We wanna recover our costs and make sure we do that, but we also don't wanna fall into the opposite trap, is we don't want our fees to become so high that they become a deterrent to development in our community. We certainly wanna avoid that, that error as well.
Some communities do, and I suggest to this to staff as an option, are fee reimbursement agreements, where you come in, apply for your permit, provide a $2,000 or more deposit, and that gets drawn upon by the village to pay their planning consultants, their attorney in preparing ordinances, whoever else is working on the project, and if it gets too, too low a balance, they have to replenish that until the project's done. That way, they are paying their, you know, the actual cost, not an estimate, and the village is not out any money, except for, you know, some minimal staff time.
That's good.
However, those fees can get high.
Yes, they can.
And so, it's not the most economical arrangement oftentimes, particularly if you have a large project, but it's probably the fairest one.
Another point that the village attorney and I talked about is, by going to an arrangement like that, a, a drawdown of a deposit, if you will, you also eliminate the, the need to have to increase your permit fees in the future. If, if costs escalate, that's kinda automatically built in to maintain a fair market level. The only thing we would have to do would be to monitor our personnel cost, knowing that we might have three or four hours' worth of clerical staff time in the administration and tracking of these permits and filing them and issuing them, that would have to be factored into a, a nominal permit fee.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, no, but, but before we move on, my brain-
No, no, but before we move on, my brain is a year older, so I did forget something. I'd like to interject something, and thank you, trustee Klebanow, for reminding me. We don't have another meeting until June 3rd, and I just wanted to announce that the Planning and Zoning Committee meeting has been moved up to June 3rd.
Building and zoning.
Pardon me?
Building and zoning.
Building and zoning committee meeting has been moved up to June 3rd. So, we'll be meeting at 6 o'clock, and it's a very important agenda. We're going to be talking about sprinkler requirements in businesses. So, thank you for letting me interject that, and thank you, trustee Klebanow, for reminding me.
Yeah, we're all getting old here. We've got to help each other out nowadays, really. Okay, yeah, no, I can say, I just want to make sure we've got staff, but I also worry because it's a new company for us, a new way of doing things for us, and it's, you know, I want to make sure we've covered everything and yet not put ourselves out of business because people may not want to come in and pay some of these fees. So, if you think these fees are similar to what all the other towns are, they would get charged at, I think we'll be okay. We want to encourage development in the town and not discourage it, but we also want friendly inspectors, people who know what they're doing. I've worked, when I was with the building department, I used to have inspectors come in, and they would make things up right there. They would literally go, you know, it's according to their code, but it would be better if, and I hated it when I heard that word come out of them. So, just as long as they're getting good reviews, that's why I want to make sure we have our outlook, we're not happy.
If we were to do nothing, correct me if I'm wrong, Fred, but if we do nothing with our fee structure and we just made the change now based on the analysis that we've looked at, it would probably be cost neutral, maybe even
Not too far out of whack, anyway.
... to residential projects. The staff has looked at a number of different scenarios, actual things that have occurred in the village over the last few years, and compared costs both with this firm and what our fee structures are, and, you know, it's kind of a wash.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you. Next. Motor fuel tax. Board to consider approval of a local sales tax of 2.5 cents per gallon on the retail sale of gasoline or motor fuel.
Good evening. Before you this evening is an ordinance recommendation to institute a local motor fuel tax on gasoline in the purchased, purchased in the Village of Westmont. During the budget process, we discussed revenue streams for the village, and one of the items that was discussed with the Administration and Finance Committee for two years running during the budget process, as well as during all of the workshops, was the possibility of generating a new revenue stream that the village desperately needs during these difficult economic times to fill the gap in our operating budget with the possibility of instituting a motor fuel tax. Before you is the ordinance, which is for 2.5 cents per gallon sold in the Village of Westmont. This is below the average that we have for the communities in the surrounding area that do have currently gasoline tax in their community, including Woodridge and Downers Grove, Naperville, Bowling Brook, Loomingdale. The proposal before you, if instituted, which was included in balancing the adopted budget for the fiscal year 2010, 2011 fiscal year, included 10 months of operating for this tax, which would be a July 1 effective date, and that would generate, based on the gallons that we have sold in the previous year, 2008, and as well as an average of 2009, would generate approximately $427,500 during the upcoming fiscal year. On a 12-month period, if our sales were to remain static, we would see in excess of $500,000 annually from this particular tax. One of the things that I know the board was very adamant about when looking at revenue streams is that it was not something that targeted or was solely being borne by the Westmont residents. This, like sales tax, is for anyone who is purchasing in Westmont, so that would include the majority of non-residents that are driving down Ogden Avenue or 63rd Street or, and visiting any of the other stations that we have in the village. Are there any questions?
Have the dealers been notified?
Not yet. There has been a press release in the paper. We have all of the paperwork attached that, and we have a list of these stations, and we would notify them, giving them the documentation and assisting them with the process of applying for it, and the forms for submitting the revenue, because it does not go through the state, it comes directly to the village.
That's one of the reasons that this is effective July 1st, is to give you, give the village an opportunity to have that kind of dialogue and educational process.
But they know about it, because I already got my
Oh, I'm sure. It's been publicized.
That's why I had asked, and I thank so much for getting us the breakdown of the towns, because, you know, some of them are in the impression that nobody around here, you know, none of the municipalities have any tax on it, and I'm sitting there, you know, I'm sorry, they do.
I think, I think most people don't realize that most communities have this tax, and we're actually late in the game in getting it. What's interesting is, I've kind of been driving around and looking at the different prices, our gas stations are the same as Downers', and Downers has a tax. I, it'll be interesting to see what happens.
Interestingly enough, our friend David Heinz wrote about that we were considering this tonight, and somebody had emailed me and said, "Check out the blogs regarding the motor fuel tax, you'll really like them." So, I did. And I must say, it never ceases to amaze me that for the citizens in this town to come out and say, you know, it's, the village board is all about revenue, well, running municipalities requires revenue, not magic pixie dust. And to come out with this, you know, comment that because the village board is now going to tax our gasoline, which, as you point out, and apparently they didn't realize that, you know, they can go to Woodridge and pay the same, they can go to Naperville and pay 4 cents a gallon, and Bowling Brook 5 cents a gallon, and they come out with these statements of, "That's it, I'm not going to shop in Westmont. I'm not going to buy my gas there, I'm not going to buy anything there." So, why don't you just shoot yourself in the foot? Because you go, why don't you go to Naperville, pay 4 cents a gallon, so that Naperville can have, you know, top-notch fire police, Public Works, and all the Naperville residents that you're helping to get all of their streets and services done, and then live in Westmont and refuse to shop here, and then turn around, and if it got to the point that you called 911 and it said your call will be answered in the order in which it was received, and in the meantime, enjoy the music, you would certainly have a lot to say about that. So, I really don't understand people that say, "I live in Westmont, but, you know, damn it, I'm just not going to shop in Westmont because you taxed me." You know me, I just got to spout off.
Well, and we've been
You shouldn't read the blogs, no matter what people tell me.
And I don't, and I don't read the blogs, and I got a phone call saying, "You have to read this blog," and I did, and, well, first I kind of laughed, and then I kind of thought, well, it's the same for people blogging, and who knows how many read it. But the interesting thing is, we have labored, we have labored at finance meetings, at board meetings, to come up with revenue streams that won't solely impact our residents. We try to spread it out, and that was one of the reasons, as Lisa alluded to, that's why we chose this, that's why we chose the sales tax. I think that we have residents in this town that think the village board lives somewhere else, and that we're not impacted. I mean, it hits us, too.
And one of the other, trustee Seneca, one of the other things I know that you discussed a lot is that this isn't a burden and wouldn't put the businesses in Westmont, the gas stations, at a disadvantage, because a lot of the surrounding communities
Not at all.
... already do have this tax, and the pumps are most likely, you're not going to see a raise in the price in excess of what the surrounding communities are going to be having because this is being, you know, put on.
I mean, gee, if you've got Naperville and Bowling Brook at 4 and 5 cents, and they're the same price as the Thornton on 63rd, who is it that is actually gouging the consumers? Hmm? Might want to talk to Thornton about that.
It's, you know, it's only a minority that are on the blogs. It's a handful that do it, and you shouldn't read them.
I stopped reading them long ago.
You know, it's unfortunate, but that, you know, what's printed in it usually gets everybody's goat and gets the blood pressure up, but it's a minority because the majority of these people in this town want us to do what we're doing, and to make sure the revenues are there, and
That's true.
We have to do it, so just don't read the blogs, especially
And the fact that it was done in conjunction with the budget, where in excess of $1 million was cut from the operating budget this year on top of two years of cuts, so it certainly has not been your first inclination to raise taxes.
Did anybody comment about, you know, how our employees for the second year in a row haven't had an increase, how, you know, the paramedic contract was renegotiated, saving us $75,000, how our 911 operators have taken a wage freeze? I mean, we have jumped, this village has jumped through hoops, jumped through hoops, and I take offense, I do, I take offense to people that
By people
can't see the big picture, because they're so narrow in their vision.
People who work here are firefighters, are communicators, and a lot of them don't live here, but they take pride in the town in which they work, and they're battered by some of the people who live here. It's, it never ceases to amaze me.
There's a core group that never wanted to change from what it was 40, 50 years ago.
Oh, and those five people still live here.
And that's, and that's what you're seeing on the blogs, is the ones that wanted to keep it, want to use the word, but the way it was.
That's fine.
The only thing, the only thing you can say in response to any of that is very simple, and I've said it on many occasions, you know, it's a case that we do the best that we can do with what we have, and any, I think, any resident that would complain about the services that they get from this village, go check other villages and see what services that they give to their residents. I guarantee you, we do things that others don't, and we still continue to do it. So, as far as any comments as to items which we have to do in order to continue to give you those services, if you've got some ideas, let us know, but I never see those ideas come forth. It's just like, but yet, residents that do like living here have made comments and suggestions and ideas, and the majority of the people that I've talked to about these things have no problem with this because it doesn't affect just our residents, it's anybody that comes through the town.
I think one of the problems, though, that the people don't realize when they're shopping for their gas, and I do shop around, I do shop around and see, you know, I'll pull in a few places to see, I'll look at their signs to see what the gas price is. Your price can be totally different in the same town. Your shell up here on Ogden is going to be higher than the shell on 63rd, or vice versa. They're both the shell, they both have the same taxes, so hello, people.
Competition.
Why is it different? It's just a matter of that owner wanting to take more money at that time, or, and maybe Ogden, he's trying to be competitive to the other gas stations on Ogden. He doesn't care on 63rd Street, he's more worried about, you know, his being competitive with the people there on Ogden. And, I mean, and I will travel, and I get very selective on where I go for gas, but I do go and shop around. If I have a chance, I'll drive past something and check the prices out, and then whoever was cheaper on the way back home, I'll stop off there and get my gas.
Just so you're not losing a lot of gas doing
This is a user, yeah. No, this is a, this is a user
I mean, you're defeating your purpose.
If you're using a lot of gas doing that, I don't recommend it.
That is correct.
No, but this is a user tax, and so, you know, I mean, if they can find it cheaper, you know, in another town, I
If they want to drive to Naperville and pay 4 cents?
But they better check in that town
Go ahead, you
What it is, you know, because I'm sure Nap, or Downers and everybody's the same, it's probably cheaper in one end of town than it is on the other end of town, so while they're shopping, too, they better, you know, decide. Now, it's the same as when we had our sales tax increase and stuff, it's a user tax. And the only other alternative would be to raise the property taxes, and that is what we're fighting against, trying to, because
I don't want to do.
Everybody in town will be affected with that.
Only.
So, we're doing our best to budget with the people who might need gas or might need a few things at the store that we had to raise, you know, the tax on, and
I do wish that they would have had the courage to come to the meeting and speak publicly, but usually people that hide behind a blog don't have the courage to.
I mean, and the car dealers, I know they're concerned because they do go to the local stations and fill up, so I know the first thing they're doing is trying to figure out how much this is going to add to theirs, but, you know, they're on Ogden. If they can find a cheaper gas station in Downers', I'm not going to be upset if they have to buy their gas from there. I just hope that they can continue. I know one was really surprised to find out that 63rd was cheaper. So, fine, drive your car down to 63rd, just keep it
Well, I do like trustee Emery's analogy. The last thing I would ever want to do when calling 911 is here, your call is very important to us.
Yes.
So, good analogy.
Well, I think the final comment to make on this one is, to all of you residents that live here in this town, to continue the services the way that you're accustomed to, we're spreading this out for anyone that comes through our fair village to pay their portion as well. So, what you're paying is to help yourself as a resident within this town. So, I request that you shop in as much as you can in this town, but if, on the other hand, that you feel that you want to help services in other villages, then by all means, that's your choice, too, but I think you'd be much happier having the services that you have here.
And contrary to popular belief, we do live here, so, you know, we pay it, too.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa.
Revision to Code of Ordinance's Personnel. Board to consider approval of a revision to Chapter 62 Personnel, Section 62-71 Standards of Dress.
Some board members may recall this discussion that we had more than a year ago regarding this particular section, this policy. We had put this policy together because we had some questions in some specific departments about, you know, what people were wearing versus what they weren't wearing in other departments, and we were looking to try to standardize that, as well as take some of our practices and essentially codify them, such as the casual dress day, which we had never really had in our policy. About a year ago, when this was brought before the Administration Finance Committee, it was decided at that point that we wanted to set it aside. Staff brought this up again a couple of weeks ago. We reviewed it again with our department heads, because, again, it was something that's out there that we never resolved, and we felt like, based on our discussion at a staff level, a lot of the department heads have already implemented a lot of the things that are in here, and, or they just already reflect things that we've been doing for some time. So, we wanted to raise this again and see if we could go ahead and make this change. We don't think that it's going to really impact anybody at this point, because pretty much everything's being followed in here.
Any questions? Okay, next. Proclamation. Board to consider a proclamation declaring the week of May 17 through the 23rd, 2010, as Emergency Medical Services Week. I'll go ahead and read it, see how it starts, the first of the week, and hopefully mayor Protem on Monday will read it again, or not. Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas the emergency medical services system consists of emergency physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, and others, and whereas the members of the emergency medical services teams, whether career volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and education to enhance their life-saving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week, and now therefore be it resolved, I, William H. Ron, his absence, not that that's me, I'm just, that's, that's in his absence, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the Village of Westmont, Illinois, I do proclaim May 17 through May 23, 2010, as Emergency Medical Services Week. In the Village of Westmont, in honor of the men and women whose diligence, skills, and professionalism keep our village and its residents safe and secure, with the theme EMS, anytime, anywhere, we'll be there. Thank you.
Good job, Phil.
Finance ordinance number one. Okay, finance ordinance number one.
Wait for the reading.
Purchase orders? Nothing on purchase orders. If there's nothing else to come before the board, I'll accept a motion for executive session.
Can I make a comment before you do?
Sure.
I think ED took it on the chin tonight.
Who?
Economic Development took it on the chin tonight.
Yeah, they did.
And I think they did something that we asked them to do. In the old days, before, when they were looking for, when the board was looking for retail only, we told them, "Don't bring us anything before us unless it's retail." And then, when we realized that we couldn't have only retail because of the way the economic situation was, we asked them, "Bring possibilities before the board so we can have some input, too." I think probably the way this thing was presented, it was shown as a retail store and then with the hair, and that's not the case, and we learned that. They did exactly what they were supposed to do, bring it up before us so we could see that this wasn't, this was apples and oranges. So I think that, I think they took a hit for us, and I think it was undeserved.
Well, thank you. I think that's well said. They did. We were pretty loud and clear.
Now I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Now I'll accept a motion
To executive session.
For executive session and personnel.
So move second?
You can only do one. Are you second?
But I'm second, if that's what he was moving.
That's what I'm, yes, thank you.
You didn't give your name.
I don't have to. Ginny looked at me.
Whether adjourned to executive session. Thank you.